Polls, same sign, appearing none motion passes. Four, four point one, visitors, Steve Beekman and Ashley Gustafson, Pipestone Coalition update.
You're up right away.
That's quick.
I know. We definitely roll ahead the very end or what?
You need, you need a...
Yeah, if you guys are able to...
Sorry that the chick's being a little dark.
That's okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We can share.
Oh, just give me...
Oh.
I don't know how that works.
Is that light on, Steve, too? It should be a green light.
Yep, I think it is now, it's on, light's on at least.
Welcome back, Steve.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me then, too, so, yeah, it's good to be back at least then, so, yeah, a little chillier outside, though, at least since, so...
Has everyone met Ashley? I don't know if you've met her. This is Ashley Gustafson.
How do you say my last name?
Gustafson.
That's enough of the name, so...
You're not the first.
Yeah, it took me a long time figuring that out then, too, so, I'm figuring it out, so... Yeah, well, thank you guys so much for allowing us to come and talk to you guys then today here, so... Yeah, my name's Steve Beekman, I was in the position with Ashley, now has them with the two before, but I just wanted to come in and talk to you guys as being, you know, just someone who's really supportive and strong with the program, and really, you know, found to be really amazing, and really enjoyed working with it then, too. And I forgot, I didn't give you guys much of an update in the last, like, year and a half, so, I'm like, you know, I probably should do that now, so, now that, you know, Ashley's starting in the program then, too, it'd be, just thought, a good chance to give you guys an update of what's been kind of all going on with Stars and Pipestone Area Coalition then, too, so... So, yeah, just really wanted to give you guys a quick overview of what the Planning and Implementation Grant is, otherwise known as the PNI Grant. Update you guys on what Stars, Pipestone Area Coalition's been doing, just some of the contributions that the Coalition and Stars has been giving to the school and the community in the last year, year and a half here, just some of the lessons that I've learned kind of along the way, and just some of the things that I've experienced with it, too. So, for all you guys that did not know this, Pipestone Area Schools is in partnership with Minnesota Department of, Minnesota Department of Health and Human Services, they're received a grant, five-year, million-dollar grant to prevent underage alcohol use. Pipestone was awarded, along with nine other communities across the state, to get this grant. It's actually in the third cohort of this, so this program's been around for the last fifteen years. Found this beautiful graph over here then, that it's actually had all the programs across the state, so Pipestone's really been the only one in the southwest corner that's gotten this opportunity to do it. Really, the goals of the program is to prevent, reduce underage alcohol use, build community capacity to prevent efforts, you know, continuing that as well then, too. And also, it uses the Positive Community Norms Framework, which I'm sure many of you guys are familiar with that as well, too. It was awarded back in July 1st, 2016, so that was way too long ago, but knowing that it ends in July 1st, 2021, and that's just something I wanted to get you guys' minds on it, knowing that this will be done in, you know, close to two years with it, too, just something to kind of keep in mind that the work that has been done, just even in the last year, the hope is it that it can be sustained for future efforts with it, too. And that's some of the things I'd really like to be sharing more of today, then. So, just kind of give you guys a good overview of how it all works out, too. Pipestone Area Coalition is working in conjunction with all of these things, with the Pipestone Area Schools as well, too. Southwest Health and Human Services is actually the fiscal host of this grant, but they're working in conjunction with Pipestone Area Coalition, Stars, and then the Arrows All-In, which does all the positive community norms messaging as well. And then Ashley is the one who is leading the charge on that one, too, so she's doing some awesome work with that then, so... So, I had to dig down deep into my pictures of everything then, too, and just to give you guys an overview from Stars, that's the Students Taking Your Right Stand group. Back when we started this in July 1st, 2016, we had a group of about twenty students. It was juniors and seniors, and this was the group that consisted that Tanya and I kind of started off with. Currently, from what Ashley told me, and from when I left, there's around seventy kids, consistently seventy kids.
Seventy-seven, seventy-three, that shows up to the average daily, or the monthly large group meeting.
Yep, which is pretty amazing considering the size of Pipestone and the other groups that have this grant as well, too. Roughly, they're running around fifty to sixty, and their schools are about four to five times the size of Pipestone. This is pretty amazing to see how many students are actually active and involved with this as well, too.
Is it still just juniors and seniors, or is this the high school?
Nine through twelve.
Nine through twelve, okay.
Nine through twelve, then, so, yep. Currently, we have Joey Coiman as our president, Zoe Veldy, vice events planner, was Michelle Neese, outreach, community outreach and relations is Caitlin Draper. Social media, because I don't know how to do that, Mara Toward was working on with that then, too. And something fun that they wanted to do is apparently they need assistance, so Carmen Skyberg and Seth Lingan were helping them all out, apparently because they needed assistance, so... I wish I had that, I guess.
Moral support.
Yeah, moral support, that's probably more illicit then, so... And then, yes, Tanya Schreier is adult advisor with that as well, too, so she's helping Ashley, as Ashley's coordinating all these efforts as well then, too. So, even just as recently as spring 2018, a year ago, this is our group that it looked like then, too. So, a group of, that was probably our full group meeting picture, actually, then, too. And just some of the things that they were active, involved with in the schools is we were able to go down to the elementary schools, visit Toni down there, and she was gracious enough to allow us to talk to some of the students, and do one of these posted note, one of those campaigns with it, too, just of some things that they are seeing that are positive in their community, and some of these things that they like to do, that really get them out there and doing really fun things then, too. And even just today, too, I heard that students again spoke with Mr. Boomgartner's sixth-grader class, and just got to talk to him about the Project Northern Curriculum that is going on in the schools, and got to talk to him about making healthy and safe choices as well, too. And one of the other things that was really cool is they did a hot chocolate stand and were able to create one of those poster, posted banners that is out there in the comments area right now. So, that was even just as early as spring, just last spring then, too. Some of the more recent things that came from that as well, too, is we were able to take students on training retreats, so we were able to take one, two of them as of last year, one in March, where we went to Bloomington, Minnesota, took a group of sixteen students over there then, too, where they received training on photo voice, this was one of their big projects that they're working on this year then, too. Some of the things about teamwork, working together, doing some outreach, things like that as well then, too. Also took another one in June, which is, and that one was twenty students, where we went up to Rutgers Bay, Minnesota, where they did training on motivational interviewing, just some of the things that they could build positive atmosphere in their school, planning for some of the community outreach events, and just kind of doing a really big recap of what they've done in the last year, which I'll be talking about more as I handed out that poster with it, too. Both of these were entirely grant-funded, so we did not have need to dip into anything with the school board or anything with the school. Grant was gracious enough to allow this to happen with it, too. Some of the things that this is really kind of a good changing point of what happened with Stars and with the grant, too, which is kind of funny talking with some of the students afterwards, but they really said that this is a great chance for them to get away and just be able to, you know, talk about some of the things that they're seeing around underage alcohol use, drug use, things like that, and just how they can really change and really make some positive impacts in the community. Super funny, and I thought this was ironic, but one of the kids actually told me, he's like, "Now I understand what we're doing in Stars." I'm like, "Okay, two years later, you finally get it, so thank you." Like, that's awesome to see that, but... So, it was just really neat to see them actually, like, getting together and working together as a group. Some of the conversations even afterwards, they just said, like, "I've, you know, obviously been going to the school my whole life with this person, and I never knew, like, how, you know, neat and interesting they were," just some of the things that they would be able to share in common, too. So, it was really cool just for them to, you know, get to collaborate and work together on a lot of those things, too. And it was really great for them, just to get a plan developed from our June retreat. From them, they came out firing of all these things that they wanted to do, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, you guys are gonna kill me for how much you want to do." They really took off from there then, too. So, they're really active in the water tower parade, really creative that we figured out how to make this float look good, at least, I don't know how that worked out, but really active with the free day at the pool, handed out towels, beach towels, sunglasses, things like that then, too. And all the Star students that are working with, working at the pool are actually, they designed some of the hats that they could actually wear then, too, so they completely designed that, too. They're actually really active and involved in passing the social host ordinance that was passed in the last year then, too, so had a really excellent turnout from them coming there. Sticker shock as well is when they hung up some of the sticker posts around in the liquor store, just giving awareness to underage alcohol use, and just helping other people know that it's, you know, not right for them to be selling and giving alcohol to minors then, too. Also been really active in a lot of the media designs and all of the things that have been created, even like the posters out there. A lot of that stuff is, you know, student-assisted and student-made as well, too. Also did a really cool thing about the free game passes at homecoming and, when was the last one?
One of the basketball games, this, one of the doubleheader this winter.
Yeah, so that was something really cool that the students wanted to do, is just giving opportunity for some of the students that don't have, you know, means of income, things, like some barriers with that, too, they just really wanted to invite them and encourage other ones to be a part of this community event, too, so, which was really, really cool for them to be active and involved with that, too. A lot of the other things, too, is they donate some of the equipment to PAs schools here, and then helping out with after-prom donations as well, too. And this is all just in the last year of what I could remember, so they have been active and involved, and I know Ashley has probably had even a lot more things of what they've been doing, too, so...
A lot of things coming, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's insane, a lot of other things with it, too. So, a lot of the stuff you've probably even seen out in the community or even around the schools, just kind of cool to see, all that was actually created by the students in Stars. Sweatshirts, actually, is entirely created by J.T. Tinklenberg, just asked him to do that, he just kind of rolled with it. All the other stuff with the two posters, the billboard that's out there then, too, you know, this is all created by our Star skits, just because that's how creative they are, and this is how much they really believe in the program, and really want to share that as well, too. Going back to what we did in our June retreat, which I found was really one of the most impactful things for me, and one of the things that actually kind of was a huge turning point for me then, too. We, hearing from one of the people we work with, Sean Colhane, he mentioned this activity where you get to be able to do an evaluation of the group, and basically just saying, "Okay, what have we been doing, you know, what have we been working on the last X amount of years," and just reflecting on that, too. So, what we did is what's called this ripple effect mapping, and all we really did with that is with the member, the twenty members that attended that June retreat, we asked them to interview each other and ask just three questions. What is better improved since Stars has began, since, you know, the grant has been here? How is your community or school different because of Stars? And what parts of Stars' efforts are you most proud of or excited about? And from there, they were able to give all their feedback from the interviews, and this is what it actually created from it, too. So, we broke it up into eight different categories of just some of the impact that the Stars groups have been seeing, and this is entirely from our students' feedback, too. None of this was adult-created, adult-led, anything like that, this is all just from what the students are seeing. Broke it up and just to the different categories of school, community, some of the stats for the data, awareness, prevention, shared values, and just the changes that they've been having, too. What really kind of struck me with this, too, is just really a lot of the relationship, too, about them seeing as a group that they can work together as a group, and that they share these common values with it, and that they've really just grown to, you know, connected together as one another, which I thought was just amazing to see, that as this group has grown in the last, you know, two years of being working together, that it's really been showing to make an impact on it, too. Cool part of it, all this, too, is we actually had one of the students create this entire graph, because I sure as heck could not create that thing, so that was really cool that she ran with that and made this entire graphic, too, so that was one of my favorite things that actually came about with it, too, then. Also, one thing, working with it, we really wanted to share some of the sustainability efforts. In just the last year since June, Stars members have donated over six hundred and seventy hours of their time to this program. That's just what I can think of. Ashley, for sure, could probably think of probably another hundred, two hundred more hours that she's been working on just in the last three months, but that really equivalates out to about ten thousand dollars, that of their time, their effort, their volunteer time, that they've just donated to the group just in the last year. My thought of that is, too, is just really to be able to get this idea out there, that Stars has been doing amazing things out there. This group has been really growing, putting itself out there then, too, and it's just some, a thought, when this, the funding does go away and the funding does end, just a thought of how will we be sustaining the Stars effort, too? Because they've been showing that they've been willing to volunteer and donate their time with it, too. And this is just the most recent picture, I know even all the freshmen were actually missing, and...
Freshmen and juniors.
Yeah, so that's probably another, what, good thirty kids they're missing probably from that, so... So, just really cool to see how, like, the group has grown, and really how active and involved that they've been with it, too. And I've actually had the opportunity to work with what's called Mayor's Youth Commission in Sioux City. What it is, is this, it's, the city of Sioux City actually organizes this group of students with all the students from Sioux City schools, and the, and the city will actually give them money to, like, work on this pro, in this program, so it's like a lump sum of, like, three thousand dollars a year that they'll give these group of students, and they kind of do efforts somewhat similar to Stars. And it's been kind of interesting to see that, too, of the group that they have, it's Sioux City's, you know, eighty-five thousand people, their group is about a hundred kids. Stars is seventy kids that are way more active and involved and care way more about their community and their school than this group of students does in Sioux City. I've had the opportunity to work with them for six months, so it's pretty amazing just to tell them all these things that we've done with Stars, what our students have been able to do, they're just blown away. They can't believe a town of forty-five hundred people has seventy kids in there, and that they've created all of those graphics that they've done, all that donation, all that time with it. It still kind of blows me away that Stars has been able to do all this effort with it, too. We even had the opportunity to do a focus group with some of the students, that was about even a month ago then, too, just some of the things that they're seeing and what they've been hearing about, or what they've kind of brought back from the program, too. And this is a really cool quote that they had in there, too, that their younger siblings are even seeing some of the posters, the billboards, and just really, they're able to say, "Hey, I helped create that, like, I was helped involved with that, too, and what we're really trying to do is just create a better environment for them to even grow up in." So, which is really kind of cool to see, that it's starting to get there even younger then, too. And that's just something I really wanted to share with, too, is just saying that the group has really been amazing in the last year of all the things that they've done, and to just kind of get that on the mind of, this is something that we obviously really want to sustain, and just how we really want to sustain this, and how do we want to work forward with it as well, too, then. And really, I wanted to give a huge shout-out to just the school district in itself about how amazing that you guys have been, Kevin, Cory, Toni, every one of you guys have been so amazing and so helpful to the program, to Stars, to the Coalition, to myself even included. It's been really amazing that you guys have been so active and supportive of this, and I really, really appreciate that, too. It's just really neat to see that now, even like a couple months later, of just how active, involved everyone's been, and I really appreciate that. And this is even kind of cool, just to see that, you know, Pipestone Area Coalition started as a grant requirement, but it's really grown into a community partnership now, that this is something we're kind of linked together in, and that we want to see this program grow and really continue to make an impact. And I know Ashley will tell you even more about some of the things that are even planned up and going on here, too, but just really wanted to know that this is a linked partnership now, but we really want to see this positive environment where kids can grow and live up to their full potential here, too. Do you want to tell them what's all got on the plan, I guess, then?
Like you said, I'm more of the future, so this is more of the past right now, what's going on. I've been in this position for about four months, and kind of just decided to just start running with it, because I'm coming into the middle of it, and we got a lot to, I have a lot to keep up with. Like I said, we, this is the day that we did our survey, so we got our new data back, and thankfully, all of our data looks pretty darn good, which is awesome, which means the kids are seeing it, they're understanding it, and they're actually taking it to heart and going along with it. As for future, we have a lot of messaging still coming out, we're hopefully going to get our new data out there, too, so kids can start seeing that they are making a difference and things like that, especially to the younger kids. Those younger kids' numbers skyrocketed like crazy, which is awesome to see. Really, like I said, we just got a lot in the works, I, my head's kind of going all over the place right now. So, four months in, but two more years to go, which is crazy. Any questions? I'll try and answer as best as I can.
You got this. And two years when the grant runs out, is there an opportunity to reapply for the grant again, or...
So, we can't do this grant specifically, but what comes next is, it's called the Drug-Free Grant, which is not quite as much money, one hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yep.
I think, for five years, so it's at least a little bit something to help keep the sustainability going, but we're gonna have to look at different ways to possibly keep going without the funding option, which is in the works, hopefully.
Next, they have, the general hope is that most communities, after receiving this, will apply for this Drug-Free Communities Grant, about a third of them get it. Generally, don't receive it in the first year after this grant, because they really want to see if you're able to sustain this, you know, sustain the meetings, if people are still bought in, and things like that. And it does take kind of a process of applying for it, too, it takes about a good year, just collecting data, information, things like that for it, because it is a federal grant, but that is the hope, to be able to sustain it with some more grant funding as well, then.
And how do students become a part of this group?
They can just join. Yep, we take anyone whenever they want to join, so if it's middle of their sophomore year and they decide, "Hey, you want to be a Stars member?" Come on in.
So, the other programs in the other communities that have been the previous grants, how many years back do they go?
So, the first ones with it are actually in that purple-ish color, so the ones that are closest to us, that was in 2010-ish, I believe that's when it started. Ranville County, Yellow Medicine County, actually, the supervisor of this grant with Southwest Health and Human Services was fortunate enough to work with the Yellow Medicine County, that dated back, yeah, in 2010, then, so...
Okay, so if the grant runs for five years, those, those communities have long used their grant up?
Yep.
Have they sustained the program, and if they have any idea how they have?
I have that actually up here, and I should pull that up, too, because... Yes, it's the one, two, and... Actually, I can prepare it. So... If I can even look at that. So, it's kind of interesting, actually, like, looking at, I'll forward this way more out with it, too, but I actually found some of this information, they, they share this out pretty freely, and it was kind of neat to see that they take a toll of it, of when they actually started their work, and I think this is probably the, yeah, this would be the right one, I guess, then, of when they actually started some of their efforts, and it's shown to be that it's, it's sustaining, they're sustaining their work with it. Some of it means that they're not reducing, but it's more or less just maintaining, while other communities and other counties around them are actually increasing some of their numbers. But some of them have dipped, and they, I've seen some of them that started upwards of forty percent of their twelfth-grade students were drinking alcohol monthly, they dipped all the way down to around fifteen percent, which is pretty darn good considering the state average is around like twenty percent of seniors or eleventh graders who are drinking monthly, so there's, some of them are dipping even below state average, and mostly, it's just because they've had this opportunity as a community to work together, so that they can now have this capacity to know how to prevent things in the future. Not necessarily that they've received more funding, or that more things came up with it, it's just that they've been able to work together as a community, seeing this as a concern, and be able to tackle it that way. Any other questions, I guess, with this? No?
Thank you for all of your work with those.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and I obviously still love coming back to Pipestone to see everybody, too, so I just really appreciate everything that you guys have done for the school and for the community, too, so, I thank you, and congrats on getting elementary schools passed, so that is, my wife and I were super supportive of that, and I, we love to see that then, too, so that was really great then, so... Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number five, consent agenda. Five point one, approved minutes of regular school board meeting, March 25, 2019. Five point two, approved minutes from special board meeting of April 15. Five three, approve, approval of gifts to the school. Five three point one, Stars donation of two fifty, lunch accounts. Five four, approve, approval of new subs to the district. Five five, approval of contracts and or work agreements. Five point one, James Skyberg, assistant boys tennis coach. Five five two, Megan Peterson, paraprofessional. Five five three, Cassandra Whipple, middle school, high school attendance and office manager. Five five four, Lori Worster, ECFE, parent educator. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Marcy, is there anything anybody would like to have removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I would like to remove five point five point three.
Okay. Do I have a motion to remove five point five point three from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Brad, Katie, or Katie and Brad. Okay, those all in favor of approving the consent agenda minus five point five point three, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, appearing none motion passes. Okay, and we'll move on to five point five point three, Cassandra Whipple, middle school, high school attendance and office manager. We'll open that up for discussion.
I guess I'm just a little concerned with the, with us wanting to reduce the budget in some areas, and just the fact of the, what the workload is, and how many secretaries we have on a full-time, year-round basis, and with, what is it, two hundred and, how many days is their contract?
Full year.
Full year contract?
Yep.
I just think we should look at maybe either reducing that to a part-time position, and, and seeing if that would work, or reducing the number of days that that new position would require in the contract.
Okay, any other discussion?
I agree. I'd just add that we're meeting as a finance committee on Wednesday, so we can look at it then, and kind of review the recommendations that, and Cory and Toni and the others have, so we'll keep that in mind for sure.
Yeah, normally, your, our budget is been more, you've had more conversations about it prior to this, but with the bond referendum, we just didn't want to get things confusing with that, so it has been something that's been discussed in our administrative team in terms of budgeting for next year, so I will be able to share that with the finance budget committee on Wednesday night, go over all of that, so...
Okay, so we want to hold this contract for until next month?
The position is not slated to start until July 1st, so it's not like there's any, we just, Mr. Strasser's done the interviews, move forward.
So, okay, since there is going to be, you know, finance committee meeting, I'll make a motion that we move this one into next month's agenda. I'll make a motion that we move this one into next month's agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Administrative reports. Six point one, Jackie Kennedy, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, we're sitting at seventy-one percent. Last year, we were at seventy-four percent. Looks like the budget's on track. I did do some budget transfers that Kevin approved between various optic posts. Bet some money on the contingency, basically, that was for...
Snow removal.
Snow removal.
We're on the melting planet.
Anyone has any questions?
Is it gonna snow anymore?
No.
I hope not.
So, you're under this month, but, I mean, that's just, because last, last year, you were at a seventy-four percent. This time, you're at a seventy-one percent. How do you foresee from here going out, I mean?
I foresee that it should be good.
So, I mean, you don't foresee any unexpected other than the weather or...
Well, when the majority of the budget is salaries, that's set.
Yep.
Transportation, pretty much set. Placebos, pretty much set, so, no.
Your confidence. Okay, that's good.
Confidence, again, be with the budget.
Yep.
That's your correct statement.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Excuse me?
Very good.
Oh, thanks.
Any other questions for Jackie? No other questions, we'll move on to six point one point two. Cory?
Yeah, just a few things tonight. First of all, we got, got through our prom the other night, and just wanted to say thank you to all the people who helped out with that and the after-prom committee. Takes a pretty good effort to put on a special night, and I thought it went really well, and there were a lot of, a lot of positive things. And I just, as a source of pride in our community, I think, year over year, our prom has been very well done, and kids get a really good experience out of it, so, very pleased with that. Put some of our summer programming that we're hoping to do posted on our website, and we'll be pushing that out to parents a little more directly than, than just our website here soon. And one thing that we're hoping to establish is just a short STEM camp and working with a couple of teachers on organizing that, putting that together. And I'll follow up a little more at our next board meeting, but something that's in the works there. Our graduation is a month away. Our seniors are ready. And as we look at that, just, just know that we would appreciate you attending. You'll be getting a formal invite as a school board member, so you can look forward to, to that coming. And again, I'll probably share a little bit more at our next board meeting, but that'll come before that. Then the last thing I wanted to mention is the state came out with our graduation rates, and if you've noticed, our, our rate came in at seventy-six percent, which is down from where we were. We were at eighty-two percent a year ago, and, and so that's something that, you know, need to figure out a little more as to, you know, what it is that leads, leads to that. And as I started looking at it, I, I can account for kids. I mean, I know what, I know what's happening to kids. I know where things are, are going. But there's got to be, kind of, some things that we can look at differently.
Maybe I'll add to that. The Commissioner of Education is really, wants to promote how school districts don't give up on kids because what you see is the four-year graduation rate, which is basically ninth grade through twelfth grade. But then they also will have, they'll keep track of the five-year graduation rate, so you will see, you know, who didn't graduate and then who did maybe the next year, six-year and seven-year graduation rates. And what they're showing is, is that, you know, most of our students do graduate. We get up over ninety percent. I think the state average now is pushing eighty-five, somewhere in there, eighty-two or eighty-four?
It's at eighty, eighty-two or eighty-three, just looking at it.
So, one of the things with this is, is that it's also about maybe those who don't graduate in four years, but it may take them five or six, and we know that some of our students who did continue to go back. It does raise a question about, you know, what do we have? We used to have maybe more of a GED program, and maybe we need to revisit some of that and even adult diploma programs through community ed. So, I think this has been a, maybe raised some good questions for us, and we'll talk a little bit more about it. I know I talked to the newspaper today, and, you know, this year's number is, I, I don't, it's low, but I, it's just cohorts of, I mean, some... We were at ninety percent here three years ago, and, you know, you just got to keep watching it to make sure that the trend is. But I think this year, we're anticipating a much more, much higher, better rate.
Yes.
So...
But we got a month to go.
Well, actually, we got some...
Should be better.
Looking at the enrollment numbers, the way they've changed monthly, whether it's early childhood, kindergarten, always senior, how can you track and be, have a truthful graduation rate? Because you've got seniors moving in and out in the last month of school. How does that affect our graduation rate?
And that's where the dropout, I mean, Cory and I, Cory knows the names, and, I mean, we went through, what, it was five dropouts? We had people move, and people, you know, so, so we're not sure how all of that's getting quoted in Mars either. You know, because it's, but we know we had about five students who didn't graduate. We had some who knew they weren't, they're continuing, and they're working towards it. So, that's where, again, you have to look at, you see this, but now we track next year. What's the five-year graduation rate on the class of twenty eighteen? What's the two-years? What's the six-years? So then you'll start to see that we were at seventy-six. That's now at ninety, or, you know, that's what you want to be. And I think that's where, even though you graduate or you turn eighteen, we're not, we don't, we don't give up. We'll continue to work with you and help you to achieve that high school diploma, so.
And we do have kids who come and finish in the summer, but if you finish in July, then I don't think that gets coded until the following year.
Right.
And so then they're going to go on the five-year, so it is interesting how it's, I, I determine the percentage.
Anytime, any numbers, you always have to kind of know what's behind the numbers, you know? So, that's that, too.
Okay. Any questions, other questions for Cory? One more? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to six point one point three. Tony?
Hey, I don't have a whole heck of a lot, just that we are winding down, of course, with field trips and that kind of stuff at the elementary schools, and we are also working on our summer program, programming as well, our targeted services. So, we will run again at Brown and Hill, so we'll be at both buildings again next year. So, and we have teachers set up for that, and we'll be sending out information to parents at the beginning of May. So, next week.
It was the sixth, so that's like Wednesday?
Yeah, next week, so, yep, so, that's really all I got.
Okay, any questions for Tony?
Hello. How's everyone? Great.
Good.
Excellent. We are finished with MCA reading. We're finished with MCA math. Tomorrow starts MCA science. That will be taken in the student's science class in grades five, eight, and in our biology class. And then we'll do that tomorrow and Wednesday. Usually, the state says it takes them about two hours to finish. That varies in our situation. But I'm looking forward to testing being done and being able to, like, get out in the classrooms again and, and have good conversations with teachers. I took five staff members this past weekend to Duluth for the Minnesota Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conference. We attended the symposium on the first day, which is separate from the conference. We were able to then hear the keynote speaker for the whole day and at the keynote about visualizing math, making math more visible. She had a lot of problems for us, and, and to show us how that you can't, you don't need to just be focusing on just the rudiments of, you know, can you add, subtract, can you actually solve problems? And, and challenge our students to do that. So, we, we as a team worked really well, and then we each were able to attend four sessions on Friday and three sessions on Saturday and hear some really amazing speakers. It was fun to hear the conversation each night at supper, what people, what their takeaways were. I was even hauled up to a classroom today. Look, we did it, and the kids loved it, and I could see what they learned and what they retained from when I was here to when I got back today. So, it was really, I'm really looking forward to some good conversations in our district math team meetings that we can implement more of these activities throughout our grade levels, not just in the grade levels that attended, and, you know, really work at getting our math aligned. We found some really good resources. This year with the MCA preliminary results, we will get a quantile measure. In the past, for reading, you received a lexile measure, same company, same idea, but this applies for math. And so, our math, potential math interventionist is very excited to see because you can get in and get free resources at the student's quantile level to help scaffold them to the actual quantile level of the standard and benchmark in their grade level. So, very well worth the, the miles and the cost and the time. I, I would recommend, and I hope I'm able to take a group every year because it's just, when you can be with people around the state who all are math geeks and then, like, me, I'm not a math person, but, but they, they welcome with open arms, so they want to help everyone. Questions?
I was going to ask about the MCD, MCA testing. You were going to implement, like, break times, and how did that go?
So far, it went really well with the reading time. Most of the kids loved their snack. It, it was easier getting them in and out from their break time without having to go through the second chance lunch or breakfast, excuse me, plus it cost, it didn't cost the kids anything. I had set aside some funding in my budget, you know, a small amount. I had looked at getting it through Tahoe, but what they wanted to charge me was three times the amount that I was able to set aside for it. So, I just went and got my own and, you know, spent one-fourth of the amount on it. And then, then all the staff felt, it was interesting because at, up here and at Hill, some staff were assigned to be snack duty, so they had to just pull out the number of snacks, and then we had grocery bags, and they hung it on the door so they didn't disturb anyone. The kids didn't have to walk anywhere other than grab a snack, go to the bathroom, and grab a drink. So, so, so far, I've heard it was positive. Some of the kids didn't like the snack, but out of Nutrigrain bars, I don't know what else I could find for twenty-five cents a piece that fit the need, but I plan on implementing that again next year. It went smoothly. Thank you for remembering and asking.
Any other questions for Melly?
Did it seem to go okay with the, where some kids weren't coming till later and some kids?
As far as I know, our attendance was okay. I wanted to swing back and will, I will ask about attendance at the end of testing. I'm going to survey staff on their view, you know, like, their perspective, how it went for them, so that we can pull together, you know, another group, like, the math team. For the one, one grade level of math wasn't happy with the plain sheet of paper for the math students can have a, a piece of scratch paper. Well, the state has many types of scratch paper you can have. And last year, scratch paper turned into a headache for me to undo who was done in the class from who wasn't done, and people didn't put their name on scratch paper, so I had to do it all over again, all the scratch papers. So, I'm like, this year, the backside of your test ticket is your scratch paper, because then your name's on it. And then I don't have to find. So, they wanted to be able to have different types of scratch paper, like some graphing paper and things, so I will bring that to our math team, you know, now and say, okay, what would you like? Then, if you would like something special, then I need you to help me find it and that make sure it fits the state qualifications so that there's an equitable opportunity, because some teachers were like, well, I have graph paper. But if you have graph paper and everyone else in your grade doesn't have graph paper, that creates an inequitable situation. So, everyone gets the same kind of paper, so, bye.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, move on to six point three, or six point two, school board meeting. School board members, are there any?
Facility maintenance committee met, kind of talked about summer projects. I think we want to try to redo the roads again out here, do bits and pieces, and we want to do the circle drive and also probably the south road for sure. It's in our LTFF budget, so that's some, one of the summer projects, I guess, that we're looking at doing. Somebody gave their stamp of approval on, on those, so we'll be moving forward with that.
Speaking outside, what happened to the light coming out of the circle drive? It's like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, somebody ran into it on Friday night. So, they came and disconnected the wires and not sure it wasn't going to be an issue.
Snowpaw took out two lights over this corner and one. So, the light poles have taken a beating with all that snow, so. And then the facility steering committee met, but we have something to do business on that, so probably just cover that there.
Okay. And you run to six point three, superintendent?
Enrollment, the same amount of students as we had last month, but I was commenting earlier that it's not the same students. I think we have fifteen out and fifteen in, or more in a month, even in the people. It's just, you know, so our enrollment is stable, but it's just, it's not, we've got kids that are coming and going. Interesting phenomenon of the matter. I don't have much for you.
Okay. Move on to seven, old business, nine, and eight, new business. Approved payment of regular monthly bills. Do I have a motion to approve payment of monthly bills?
So moved. Second.
Got him, Jackie? Okay. Right here, okay, we have the motion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approved payment of regular monthly bills, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point two, approved treasurer's report for March of twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Randy?
Second.
Brad?
I just want to say, can I talk? I just want to say one thing about this report. It looks like we're way, way high on the cash, or the last year's. When I went back and looked at that last year, for some reason, last year in March, we only received one state aid name, but we only received two, so almost delayed one, so don't let that fool you. The lie will say. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Jackie? Any questions? Hearing none. All those approve in favor of approving the treasurer's report for March of twenty nineteen, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point three, approve, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, school calendar. Do I have a motion?
Uh, well, this was presented last month by the calendar committee. They had met with the teachers and taken it, but, uh, suggestions from the admin team. So, this is the proposal that was brought forward last month. There is, I just would like to point out, there is one less student day. Instead of a hundred and seventy-four, it's a hundred and seventy-three. But we did drop four early dismissals, so the student time, we feel, is, should be the same. And we'd just rather have a full day rather than some of those early dismissals. It is a little bit earlier, but Labor Day is September second, so we get to start on the third. We're not starting on the seventh or the eighth or, you know, some of those, so. So, we are basically done with everything by about the twenty-seventh of May with this calendar, so.
Hope. Hope is a good word.
I didn't say nothing.
Do I have a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Do I have a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 calendar?
So moved.
Katie, second?
Second.
Randy? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 2019, 2020 school calendar, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point four, timeline for construction.
Facility steering committee met last week with Carl Anderson and ISG to kind of talk about what's gonna happen and start working on the preliminary things that need to be done. Just for your information, and this is a preliminary, nothing finalized, but Carl Anderson put this together basically of telling you, you know, where things are at. It's a timeline. It's front and back, goes all the way to when we move in in the fall of September of 2021. So you can see that what it is, they can, item number one, Pipestone Area Schools referendum project. Duration, six hundred and seventeen days. You know, and it just lays out the times and everything and what's going on. The engineers and the architects have begun to put together some things and start doing some work. What they're asking us to do is to put in a oversight committee or a
A core planning group.
A core planning group of some parents, teachers, administrators, board members, if they want to be on there. They would probably go do some tours of some schools and then sit down and talk with the architect about what you like, kind of some of the aesthetics and some of the things that will be in there. You know, this is where, do you want it one-story or two-story or, you know, what are the costs associated? So you get to start breaking some of that stuff down. But that'll be starting here very quickly and then they're hoping to start getting some schematics in so that we can get some feedback, I think, as, you know, employees. Also, we'd like to have a couple of community meetings to say what's going on, what do you see? What are your questions? So that they get continual feedback. When they do get into the classrooms and some of the internal, that is where the teachers will come in. They will solicit advice from the teachers. That work will be going on this summer. And they're looking to have basically a plan kind of put in place by about October that starts going out for bids in November. They, that's kind of their timeline. And from there, we'll shove it in the ground next spring. They probably would be able to get the safety and security stuff for the middle school, high school done that first summer. So that won't be two years. They'll, that'll, we'll go one more year, but then we'll probably, maybe there'll be some things, I don't know. But we may also know that the bonds will be sold June. We will have a set sale resolution. The board will have to, July is the actual selling of the bonds and then we get the funds in August. So we will have that money in August. That's where we look to invest. We're gonna let, have that money work in a little bit, so that'll help out. And all that money has to go back into the project, so that's where you're furnishing. And if there's other things that come up, you're gonna have some of that there, so. But basically, this is a preliminary schedule and they've talked, they will give us whatever the board wants. If you want monthly updates, if you want quarterly updates, they will probably, you will be here. I think the, right now, you got to meet project managers, so you'll see, you'll meet a new person from ISG and a new person from Carl Anderson, Rod and those guys will be around. But now you can start dealing with other people a little bit there, so that's kind of where that's at.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? So do we want to decide the course of the board stand, twenty-five point, or? Because they were talking, they wanted to do building tours quite quick.
Katie said she's interested to go on.
I would like to go if I can fit in my schedule. Anybody else want to go?
Francis up there. I can try, but can't.
It's most likely to be during the day, so I mean, I'm not gonna have to. I think we're gonna go to Mangato, Fort Dodge, Iowa, and Sibley's, over at A-Large. Probably those schools that we're gonna be looking at, so. May, we'll start doing conversations, so. May eighth, I believe. Something about May eighth, we have to, I gotta have something to them, I mean, so that's next week.
I was gonna say, that's pretty great.
No, no. Just starting to, setting the times and things like that.
Okay. So you, Katie, Brad, I, anybody else? I mean, you can get on the list if it works.
Randy said he.
Yeah, if it works.
I'm the same, that's Randy. If it works, I don't know.
How about if I just say, here's what we got planned?
Yeah, that works perfect.
I'll just communicate that one more time. Okay. We'll do it that way. You can make it, you can make it.
Yep.
Okay. Then we'll move on to eight point five, school, county, city meetings.
I remember, I believe, Myron Hoops, mayor, talked to me a while ago about that the government agencies, the city, the county and the school district, if the boards have representative members to sit down and just talk about things that are maybe like quarterly meetings or a couple of times a year to just kind of see what's going on in our worlds. And then I read in the newspaper, the county had nominated two people, so. Oh, okay, I guess we're, I don't know of any meetings that have been actually scheduled yet, but I think if we're gonna do that, we should probably have a couple of reps from the board that maybe would go to sit in on that and see what conversations are, so. I don't know, I mean, I'll be honest with you, as far as the school district, what the city and county are doing, I don't know how much that impacts us. I mean, they built a water treatment plant. I suppose we could think about that if we're planning on going out for a bond or something. But, you know, we kind of are doing our thing, so.
So it'd be like a liaison meeting between all these three entities? Is that what it's is?
I think that's the concept, I think that's the concept of, let's sit down and see what's going on or.
I think the article in the paper had a pretty strong opinion of talking about land utilization and the different lots that would be available, so.
Right, and I think that stems from Brown, where we're going to become available.
They had mentioned central school lot being available too, or what to do with that, so.
I've had some community members reach out, particularly about the Brown baseball stadium. That a lot of donation funds got put in place to get that ball field put in. There was a lot of work involved and with the talk of a sale, that, you know, we keep in mind a way to keep that ball field in its current location, even after a sale of land or whatever.
But I know early on in the process, that was brought up at board meetings about that ball field. And that, when it did come down, if we were able to pass a bond, when it came down to moving into the new building, that we needed to look at, you know, what's gonna be the best utilization. I think at that time, most of the board members were in favor of trying to work something out so that it stayed there. Because, yeah, that was, most of that was all donated stuff. So it's something that we'll definitely have to be dealt with when we come closer to decommissioning those students, so.
If there's any issue with us giving that to the city or, you know, I don't know if the school has to keep it, but we have to check into the legal requirements and all that can be decided over. The city's already got a ball field across the road and they have load terminals for the, for the lines that works.
Seems like it gets utilized, yeah.
It's a nice setup, Chris, yeah.
It is, but there will be, have to be some things that are done because of it, because you're still gonna have electric and water that then will have to be somehow brought to it. Because right now, I believe the electric and water is probably coming off the school.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What's electric is for the scoreboard. Water might not be, but what the electric is, so, I mean, there's, there's some, that's something that we'll have the time to look into.
Two years from now is when we'll be moved in and then we start having the conversation about those other sites and all the details that go on with that, so. I mean, not that we have to wait two years, but we can have a plan in place leading up to that. Right now, we still need them to educate our children, so for the next couple of years, it'll be worth it.
Yep. So from eight point five, the school, county, city meetings, I would be interested in that. I would also. We'll go up to three, so if there's something else that we could take.
I think you can handle it.
Is it three each or just two each, at least?
Be whatever it is. You guys can say one.
Well, I think Kevin would be involved.
I was gonna say, yeah, is it just board members or can we have you as a?
Boy, I really think that would be a good idea to have me there.
Well, I didn't know.
I'm thinking Calvin needs you. So, okay. We'll move on then to eight point six, letter of retirement from Roberta Walgrave. Do I have a motion to accept Roberta's letter of retirement?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
I don't know if Ms. Barton would like, I mean, thirty-four years of teaching, that's a career, all with Pipestone School District. She served a lot of students.
Even a couple of my own kids, so, yeah.
She was my basketball coach in like seventh, eighth grade, I can't remember which.
Coaching too.
Yeah, she used to teach girls basketball.
For sure. So yes, we thank her for her service and she will, she will be missed.
Always a big decision to make that move, so best of luck to her and thank her for all her years of service in the school.
Yeah, for sure.
And I too would like to say thanks for the thirty-four years, because I know she had one or two of my kids develop the tenure too. So she's done a fantastic job. She's one of them teachers that's generally concerned about those kids and has done a fantastic job. Do I, we've got the motions to accept. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting letter of retirement from Roberta Walgrave, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Randy, Brad, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.